About that starting budget.
All right, at six thirty, we will call the Monday, June twelfth, the council meeting to order. If we could start with the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
No additions to the agenda, no additions to the agenda, Mayor.
All right, I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, I'll go here, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries four zero. That will take some public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments, move to consent. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, I'll go here, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries four zero. That will take us to business item twelve, proclamation for the International Widows Day.
Thank you, Mayor. Each year, remember, as part of the memory of Captain Jeffrey Volmer and his passing, leaving him behind Emily, his wife, and his kids, we adopt the proclamation for International Widows Day, which I have included in the packet.
Thank you. So with that, we have a proclamation declaring June twenty-third as International Widows Day. Whereas Internationals Widows, International Widows Day is a global awareness day that takes place annually on June twenty-third. The day was launched by the United Nations in two thousand and ten to raise awareness of the needs and plight of widows and their families globally, nationally, locally, and locally, in order to give them a voice to be heard, seen, understood, and served. And whereas there are nearly, there are current, there are currently nearly fourteen million widows in the United States, two hundred and fifty-eight million widows globally, and five hundred and eighty-five million children who are directly affected by the loss of their father. And whereas consequently, the Modern Widows Club, an Orlando Foundation nonprofit, was founded in two thousand and eleven and leads the United States in advocacy, mentoring, and leadership for women in widowhood. And whereas the chapter of the Modern Widows Club was established in February two thousand and twenty and serves to empower women in widowhood within the greater mayor area and provide them with the tools to lean into life, build resilience, and make positive differences in their own lives and those of other in their community. And whereas supportive communities are able to greatly assist and empower widows and their families to become thriving and vital members of society through understanding and crucial needs of widows' lives and aiding in the development of services, programs, outreach, and community involvement from all those within our city, state, and nation to ensure widows and their families become thriving and vital members of society at large. And whereas it is fitting and proper that the city of mayor recognizes the Minneapolis West Modern Widows Club and honors June twenty-third as International Widows Day. So with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the proclamation.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. So with that, I proclaim June twenty-third as Internationals Widows Day. Nick should take us to thirteen, employee firefighter response policy.
Thank you, Mayor. Back when, back when Scott Tyson was hired onto the department, the personnel committee had looked at the potential of having him respond to fire calls during the day. And at that time, the personnel committee said, since we don't have a policy in place that governs how those calls during the workday are handled, we're just going to have him not respond to calls. And should a request come in that the fire department would like to see him start attending because they are being proactive or they're having deficits and daytime calls, then we would address the matter at that time. Chief Andy Metzold came to me and requested that we take a look at this type of policy. So I pulled a couple of policies from Watertown and Waconia, both were very similar nature, and used those as a basis for the policy you have in front of you today. This was brought to a personnel committee meeting and they did review it. Recommendation is to, excuse me, recommendation is to approve. But the procedure that lied up, laid out in the policy is that it's left up to the judgment of the employee in order to determine whether or not they go on a fire call. Generally speaking, if it isn't life-threatening, and if it doesn't leave other employees stranded, if the plays are a middle of a critical project that they need all hands there for, and the call is the lift assist, if it's something minor in nature, then Scott's expected to stay on and help out. Now, if a call goes out and his presence is absolutely needed, if, say, a call does go out, Scott decides that maybe he doesn't need to go to it, but then Andy calls in or one of the other officer calls in and says, yes, we really need him to respond because we didn't have anybody else during the day to respond, then he would certainly look at going and fulfilling that. From a payroll standpoint, this models the way Water, Waconia do it. But in other cities where I've had public works people on the department, it also mirrors what was done there. So if they respond during the work shift, they would mark that on their timesheet that they responded to a call, but they'd simply, they simply receive their hourly rate of pay as they would if they were just continuing on duty. So they've received their public works worker two wage, but they would forego their fire call pay in that regard. And that's how a lot of cities seem to do it. And the reason they do that is because, because the city is the employer in both ends of things, there is overlapping time, there's, there's overtime that gets calculated into it, and there is just more overlap in that. So that the cleanest method that cities have found is that just let them earn their hourly pay during the day work shift. Otherwise, you have to deal with, how do they, if they take the fire pay, how do you deal with the amount that's left over? Do they just lose pay, or do they have to use PTO? Or how do you resolve that gap in the balance? So a lot of them just say, you know, it's a benefit to have them in town responding during the day. Pay them that, but if they go over forty hours in a week where the time is spent outside of the workday, if they responded to a call in the evening during that, that time has to be counted as time and a half as overtime on the fire rate of pay, not the public works rate of pay. So that's how that gets handled on a time, time sheet end of things.
He gets overtime for anything over forty, including fire calls?
Yes.
At the time and a half of?
The fire rate of pay. Not the public works rate of pay.
So is it all the one, sorry, can I ask questions?
Yeah.
Is it all, so I think you answered this, right? It's one W two, right? Like, it's paid the same?
Yes. And that's why the overtime comes into play because there's, the way labor laws work is they don't see a distinction between firefighter for city and public works worker for city. They're city employee for both. So the time for overtime counts towards both. And there's no way to slice that. And that's, that's why the overtime hours, the language you see here was same type of language you saw for Waconia and Watertown, because that's the way labor laws dictate we have to handle it.
And right, like the workman's comp or the liability, all of that is the same between the city and the fire department?
Yep. So all policies for workman's comp and property casually are carried through the League of Minnesota is the city's insurance trust and the fire department, public works, all our departments, they're all under one policy.
And then there's no concern with inequity amongst the firemen, right? Like, if we're both on it and I'm a city employee and I'm getting paid whatever, and you're an on-call fireman getting paid their hourly rate, there's no concerns there? I mean, that's?
If there is, we have no control over it. So if, if, if there would be a firefighter who might have a gripe with that, labor laws tell us we have to handle it this way. We're not doing it because we necessarily feel that we should be docking and doing anything like that, but this is the way the labor laws tell us the best. Given, I'm sorry, given the labor laws, this is the way the best practice has been handled with cities.
Any other questions?
Do you?
Andy, anything you'd like to add?
I don't think I've got anything else to add. I'll answer any questions, I guess, if anybody's got any questions on it all.
So how many calls do you think come out in a day?
During the workday hour in a year, I would say probably, probably thirty-five percent or forty percent are during the, you know, workday hours, you know, Monday through Friday. So, you know, that's sixty calls.
One, more than one a week, or about one a week, I mean?
Yep.
I've had conversations with Scott on everything, too, and it seems like we've got a pretty good understanding of what he's looking to respond to, you know, kind of a game plan, I guess we could say, between him and I. So I think it'll, long story short, I think it'll work out really well, so.
Yeah. Again, I look back at some of them and, you know, the day hours and what would be, you know, more of the critical calls versus the lifts assist and the minor ones. I think for the last three months, I, there was maybe two of them that would have, you know, that he might have, you know, act of fire or big things like that. So it's just gonna be, so it's not gonna be real common. There weren't many of them in the last couple of months that he would have even went to for that reason, based on the policy. And I think it's a good proactive, and I appreciate Chief Metzold bringing this, being proactive, just for the community and the public safety and making sure, and for the other firefighters. If there is an active fire, firefighters are, we need the people out there to rotate them around. So I think that helps everything, so. It is my opinion on it.
Yeah, and that's, I read that, too, right? Like, with retirees, you know, I mean, it used to be everybody worked, not everybody, but a high percentage.
In this past year, we retired two members that were people of daytime calls. Got a handful of people that, you know, any given day could be in town, could not be in town. And so with that, you never really know, you know, who it got. Sometimes, yeah, there's, there's plenty, but we had times where there wasn't. And Scott, especially being a senior member of the department, offers a lot of benefit for us to be able to respond.
Any other questions?
And you don't see any concern with the pay, or?
I, I don't think so. Will there be a little bit of kidding here and there? I don't think it would be a precaution.
All right, with that, I'll look for motion to approve the city employee firefighter response policy.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, we have a second.
A second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Post the same sign. Motion carries four zero. With that, then we'll move to the MOU for Juneteenth.
Thank you, Mayor. The state legislature and the governor has signed a, an amendment to a bill which has made Juneteenth, which is due nineteenth, effective for this year. The original bill didn't have Juneteenth taking effect until two thousand and twenty-four, but an amendment was carried forward, which made it effective for this year. So what that means for cities is now that it is a recognized state holiday, we are not allowed to conduct any business on a state holiday. Offices must be closed only in matters of emergencies, like call out to public works because we got a water main break. Can we do any, can we do anything? But city offices have to be closed. We can't have city council meetings on those. We can't have committee meetings, anything like that. The legal slice on the whole thing is even though we are required to be closed, legally speaking, you do not have to pay your employees for making them be off on a state holiday. Now, that being said, all the other holidays are paid holidays. The state enacted this. This was nothing that came from the employees for that. And in my research on this, I contacted ten of the eleven other cities in Carver County, and the eleventh one was New Germany. They just haven't done anything with it. But the other ten had added it to their holiday schedule, just like the, what is being proposed here tonight. This was brought before the personnel committee. They did discuss it at length with some factors in there. I think towards the end, the general understanding was to bring it up for a recommendation on that. Any members of the personnel committee wish to add to that?
No, I just didn't think it was fair that they can't work and then they'd have to take a PTO day or not get paid. So just adding it to the schedule because it's now a state-recognized holiday.
Any questions? I'll look for a motion to approve the MOA with Local Forty-Nine Union to include Juneteenth as a recognized holiday.
Make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion?
So, I mean, with the governor now signing this and signing the family leave and all of that, are we concerned about how much work we're gonna get done in the city? I mean, I get, like, our dollars may not change. We're gonna pay them, but they're just not working.
I don't think we're gonna have an issue, like with the family medical leave stuff, I, that's really more intended for long-term type of stuff, not for interim. And we already have PTO days that staff can earn for that sort of stuff. So at a city level, I don't think it's going to affect us a whole lot as much as it would in, say, private sector businesses. Are probably gonna see a much bigger hit on this sort of stuff than we will. Just because the vast majority of our staff is full-time staff, we don't have much part-time that this would really affect on this. So, and given that we've added one more in public works and one more in the office, not knowing this was around the corner, I don't see, there's an effect, it'll be marginal at best, I think.
Okay. Which seems like a lot.
If any further discussion? None, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries four zero. Consideration of the approval of the rural service district information for two thousand and twenty-four.
So my understanding is this is an annual item that is brought up from Carver County. So the Carver County Tax Services Department puts this out. And a rural service district is something that can be, it doesn't have to be enacted by a city, but mayor has adopted one. You can see here, these are the cities here which do have them. And what a rural service district does is it bifurcates the city between properties which are rural in character and properties which are urban in character. The biggest difference in that being developed versus undeveloped land. And what we're looking at here is what has been passed by mayor previously as far as their rural service district rate. And what happens is a city elects to have a rural service district percentage rate, and that functions as the tax rate which is applied to the parcels rather than the full city's tax rates. So a rural service district, in short, provides a tax break to more the undeveloped parcels which are on the city's list. And the city's list includes these two properties. So these are the only two on the list for a rural service district. So this information was supplied to me by the county, and my recommendation is to approve the rural service district with no changes. So everything would stay as is going into the next year.
If you put on a page two, in our, in our section, is there, were we supposed to have some townships listed, like the other ones? Is that a typo?
It might.
Can you find out if we need to add something?
Yeah, I, I'd be willing to bet that the resolution, a resolution needs to be passed on this, and there's a public hearing you do as part of it when you initially do rural service district, but yes, I'll double check into that.
All right, with that, I'll look for a motion to approve the rural service district with no changes.
A motion.
A motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries four zero. Consider approve a quote for street patchwork.
So we've obtained a quote to do some patchwork around, the majority of it is around manholes within the seal coating area. And then there's also some additional patchwork along Sixty-second or Seventh Street that we recently did mill and overlay work, just to correct some patches that, or potholes that crept up here very recently. Some of you may have noticed, this work is, they got here a little early, ahead of the gun. So they've been patching there today without us giving authorization.
Phil Stone this morning, already hard at it, so.
Now they?
Denied.
Thank you for the free ass.
Maybe haven't put blacktop in the holes yet, and they're all milled. I think they're coming back tomorrow to do that, but, yeah. So it was, I can jump in, Nick.
Yeah, feel free.
So their seal coating and the, when the seal coder called me last week and said they're coming to nineteenth, and it's like, hold your horses, we have to get this work taken care of first, and we really wanted to keep them on the nineteenth. So I had a conversation with Mueller's and be like, can you get here this week after it gets approved Monday, hopefully?
After it gets approved.
After it gets approved, hopefully, and then I'll, yeah, so it kind of cart before the horse, but Mueller's has done all of our work on our patchwork since I've been here a mere ten years, so.
We've been good partners.
Very good partners, and they're doing the mill and overlay, and it got, it's on their schedule for this week so we can keep everything. I didn't want to, definitely didn't want to push them away because who knows when they would have been able to come back. And we didn't want to push the seal coating off either, because the fact we're getting our seal coating done in June, it'll have all summer to bake to the road, stick to the road. So we're not doing it August, and we won't be plowing half of it off this winter. So it'll be a nice long cure time for the seal code rock. So that was kind of the balls we were juggling in the air last week, and it just kind of, one fell off a little bit.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then the fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty, Nick, is coming, is that coming from a budget item? Is that which?
So as we just, as we looked at, when we came back to do the whole picture between the funds that we had available for the mill and overlay project versus public works building project, we had about thirty-seven thousand dollars remaining after we added in those additional sections of Hidden Creek. So this would come out of that thirty-seven.
Surplus we have.
Yep. Yep.
All right, any other questions for Nick or Kyle? I'll look for a motion to approve the street patchwork from Mueller and Sons for fourteen thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
Motion.
A motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wagner, anything you report on?
No.
No, Councilmember Neely?
We just had the personnel committee meeting last week, and we voted on all the things we talked about.
Right, yeah. And same with me, I was at personnel, and then we have public works and public works discussed street projects. So I have nothing more. I did attend, me and the city administrator, attended the DNR recognition for Sandy Health and Doug Ernst on Saturday for their fifty years of firearms training. It was a nice turnout. DNR was there to present them. They had thirty, forty people were there, and we read the proclamation to them and gave them a, gave them a copy of it, and so it went well. It was really nice. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
A motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, I'll go here, say aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. We are adjourned.
Always do. I'm always working at home.
Perfect. Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Kyle. With that, then we'll jump right into the workshop and we'll call it to order.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the workshop this, this evening, just want to bring up the potential regionalization of law enforcement services. I know this has been a subject I've been bringing up here and there in my update emails and some of the staff reports I've been doing, but just wanted to go on more of a formal tangent with it, bring it out front. Bring council up to speed wholly on what's been talked about. It hasn't been a ton, but we're at the point where we need to start giving it some more consideration of which direction we really want to go regarding the regionalization of sheriff policing services. So with that, a little bit of background on some of the items related to it, background on the contract. As you know, we have the Town Cop model style, which we have a specific officer who covers our community, Brad Hendricks, and he's been doing that for a handful of years now. We share one full-time employee, Brad, with New Germany. We have point eight eight of the full-time equivalent, which is about thirty-five hours per week, and New Germany has the other point one two, which is about five hours per week, roughly. So with the Town Cop model, we, each year, Brad and I, we sit down and we go through a plan which gets approved between us, and then it's sent off to his superiors who give it a review. And it sets out the goals and objectives that they're to complete, to be, to complete and be aware of. And involves in community involvement, patrolling around, getting out and talking with people, meeting with businesses, getting to know them a bit more, a lot of that community policing style that you like to see and things like that. Outside of the contract, it's good to note that if we didn't have any contract whatsoever, we would still get the basic call response for service, which is what all the townships enjoy. So if there's an incident that happens on the township, the county responds to those when they get calls for that. So those will, those happen outside of the scheduled contract hours with Brad. So if it happens on a, well, on this schedule, if it happens on a Friday, somebody calls in about a burglary or what have you, a sheriff would respond. A little background about the service that we have. The most recent coverage we had before we were switched up here, it was an alternating weekly schedule. It was ten-hour shifts, and it was Wednesday to Saturday, noon to ten, and then it was Tuesday to Friday, noon to ten. And then we were switched to our current temporary coverage, which is Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday, with every other Saturday, six AM to six PM. And this was something, and talk a little bit more about it later, is that this was born out of a move that the sheriff, Carver County Sheriff's Office wanted to make, where they wanted to move to permanent twelve-hour schedules. What they were finding is police officers in recruitment and retention in the labor pool prefer the twelve-hour schedule. That's what they liked. They, they were moving away from eights, they were moving away from tens, and they liked the twelve-hour schedule. So Carver County, wanting to make sure they keep up with the best practices for recruitment and retention, want to go to these twelve-hour schedules. A little bit of background about the conversations and what has led up to this point. On February fifteenth, we had Carver County Sheriff's Office had their annual contract meeting. This is where they get us together and they start talking about what, what, what the following year is going to look like as far as costs, about what they're thinking long-term, things of that nature. At that meeting, that's when they stated that they wanted to go to the twelve-hour shifts permanently. And if you recall, Mike Weline was here on the thirteenth, our thirteenth, February thirteenth council meeting, where he announced that they were making these changes and putting it on, us on the twelve-hour schedule. At this meeting, they said they wanted to go to twelve-hour shifts permanently. Regionalization of Watertown Mayor New Germany was briefly mentioned. They didn't go into it with a lot of detail, but it was mentioned. And they didn't say it was going to be in a similar style to New, Norwood, Young, America, Hamburg, and Cologne, because those three communities are regionalized. But I heard that and I thought, okay, if they're mentioning it, that's probably a direction what they want to go. Ultimately, the sheriff's office through the contract does have ultimate authority of how things get scheduled, according to the language. We do have input, and they will listen to our input, but ultimately, they do have the final say on that. So a couple of months later, I've been talking with Mike Weline off and on through email, asking a little bit more about it. So we cited to set up a meeting. I went over to Chaska to meet with him at his office on April nineteenth, and that's when we had some deeper conversations about regionalization and what it might look like. Because I, in my experience with previous cities, I've had police departments where I had a police chief, I had officers, or was used to having a municipal police department. So this is the first one I've had that's been a contract. So I just wanted to learn a bit more, familiarize myself. So regionalization in this context is they want to move to the twelve-hour shifts, and they're setting it up on a team one and team two basis. Team one handles half the week, and that's, Brad's on team two. So team one covers Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and every other Saturday. And then team one covers Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and every other Saturday. So it's split up half weeks, and then you have a day shift and a night shift for each, and that's where you get the twelve-hour shifts for twenty-four-hour coverage. So it would likely shift to something like that that hasn't been set in stone, we're still having those conversations. So I got to learn more about regionalization and what that would mean in that context. And then uh, May thirty first, I got together with Mike Weline and Jake Foster, the city administrator for Watertown to have further discussions regarding regionalization. I'd heard some things about Watertown may or may not be yet regarding regionalization, so that's why I want to pull Jake in on the conversation, have all three of us sit together. At this point, we, I'd sent out some emails regarding regionalization, I talked to Personnel Committee a little bit about regionalization and things seemed to be, there were some nodding heads from the mayor's standpoint that, yeah, let's continue to flesh this out, see where it goes. So got together with Jake, we talked about it, uh Jake had a number of questions as it was being brought up to him for the first time. So it was a very good meeting. As far as scheduling goes, this is where I talked about the preliminary discussions to utilize that team one and T, T, team two shift. That twelve hour day night shift rotation on the six AM and the six PM being the on and offs and the shifts between officers. Instead of having uh someone dedicated to us like Brad is, we would have several offer, officers who would patrol over the course of the week. If we have uh team one and team two with day and night shift, you have four, maybe more if someone's pinch hitting, if there's a sick day. But you would generally have four officers that'd be dedicated and rotating through the three communities on a twenty-four hour basis. Now, there's a total of hundred and sixty-eight hours available per week on a twenty-four hour schedule between Watertown Mayor and New Germany. For contrast, Watertown currently has three FTE officers, whereas we have point eight eight and New Germany carries the other point one two to make up for four total. So in a transitory sense, uh it seems to work out really well, they're looking at having four officers at regionalization. And Watertown already has three and we have one between Mayor and New Germany, so you have four going into it. I know Watertown has wanted to have a second car as part of their F, three FTE shift. Right now, they only have one patrol vehicle. And what they're running into is if, say, their day shift person that gets off at six o'clock, let's say at five thirty, they have a traffic stop and it goes long. They only have one vehicle, so that vehicle's tied up in the shift changeover until that officer gets done dealing with that incident. And then they can bring the vehicle back and have the night person come on. So there is a little added benefit that you'd be combining the mayor and Watertown cars, so there'd be that two there that they were already looking for. So there could be some uh potential transitory uh benefits there. So at this point, do. So when it comes to scheduling, I, I had sent this out earlier to give a, a generalized look at what I've been pushing for, and I certainly want feedback from counsel on this as well, is I think we want to look at something that is flexible in nature as far as days of the week goes. You might have some hards that you want to see on that, but really I think time of day is more important than the specific days that we want an officer here. And I think when you have regionalized schedules, since you have rotating officers in and out, you can request to have certain times of days or certain blocks of activity that you'd like to have looked at closer than say four PM on a Saturday, for example. Generally looking at that, that morning traffic, generally looking at that, that post-work traffic, making sure that they do go through the neighborhoods, make their face known and seen. Still patrolling around like that, couple runs at night during the night hours where they could go around and shake handles on businesses and just patrol the neighborhoods once again. I think, and talking with Brad, I think a full, you know, drive around of the community takes about thirty-eight minutes, according to him. Then maybe some Friday and Saturday to stop around during the evening hours. You don't hawk the bars and I want to make sure if any of the bars are listening, it's not hawking the bars, I don't believe in that whatsoever. But patrolling to round just to make sure things are okay. Having support to the bars in case there might be an emergency, not hawking the bars, standing nearby and running traffic, nothing like that. And that's more time of day type of stuff rather than specific day type of stuff. And I think regionalization lends us that flexibility versus our shift that we're on currently, which we have Sunday, Monday and Tuesday, and then every other Saturdays. We're locked in there where it's regionalization can provide some potential flexibility. It's hard to see in this, in a Excel spreadsheet because you have to have static, but the idea is that these days could rotate around, it's not necessarily Monday, Wednesday, Friday, maybe another week it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or maybe just Tuesday, Thursday, or a rotating day like that. The idea is you generally get your hours in that you're looking at uh on that front. Regarding cost, uh this is a spreadsheet that the sheriff's office utilizes to calculate our costs. I took that and I just kind of add a little bit more to it to get some regionalized numbers here. So right up here, we're looking at the corporal. So in these discussions, we don't talk about CSO hours, which would be added to any of these uh discussions. And it's kind of a separate duty that they handle. So CSO is a community service officer and their primary responsibility is handling ordinance complaints at a very thirty thousand foot view description of it. So those are something that we'd sign up separate, say of, it's involved in the contract, but really focusing on the regionalization of the officers, not necessarily the CSOs with, at this point. And for uh just discussion purposes, CSO, we generally sign up for five to six thousand dollars worth of CSO hours a year. If anybody was wondering on that front. So we've got here the contracted hours per corporal, we got the number of deputies there, total cost for the deputies, the number of vehicles, and that all compiles into the total cost for all of that together. Then down here, this is where we take out that hourly split that we're looking at before. Originally, I was thinking, you know, maybe we could slim it down to twenty hours, but that was uh in my discussion, when we had the discussions with the three of us. Mike brought up a really excellent point that I was, it was in my, it was in the back of my head, but I just didn't think about it. It's like, in the, in the schedule here that I showed you, this is twenty hours worth of patrol time. But there's also administrative paperwork that happens after the fact, that a lot of people don't see and aren't aware of. So we're, and Mike was saying, well, you know, he's, he's going to do more research on it on our behalf. He said he thinks maybe more that thirty hours per week is probably where mayor sitting. If you're going to have a hard split there, or I was thinking more along the lines of twenty. So built this spreadsheet so that we could take a look at those costs and what they would look like. So here's where you split out that hundred and sixty-eight hours from the total. Uh, then it goes across and that's what Watertown would be looking at, mayor would be looking at, and New Germany would be looking at for those specific hours. Now, these are for demonstration purposes to give us an idea of what it might look like. This could tweak and change a little bit here and there, depending on where things go. And then when you get down to breaking that out of twenty twenty-three versus what I call old twenty twenty-four under the, the current system, and then what regionalized would look like. It gives you an idea of the cost difference uh between twenty twenty-four old and twenty twenty-four regionalized. So Watertown would be looking at a thirty-five thousand, we'd be looking at thirty-four thousand decrease, roughly speaking. If we were to shift down to those thirty on that. And this one, this gives you a little bit of a historical uh cost figure about where mayor has been uh since two thousand fifteen. That twenty twenty-four figure represents under uh the current co, type of contract, the town cop model, where we be, we would be at. And these figures do include CSO hours, because I wasn't able to split them out when I was looking up onto the software system, I just had total payments on those. So these do, so if you notice that difference in the regionalized cost versus historical, this includes CSO hours as well. And then um I did pull the data from the sheriff's office for twenty twenty-two calls uh countywide for all of the cities together. So I got those totals here for the calls and then I put them on a per thousand population basis to normalize the data for a rate that then we can compare ourselves against with the other communities, just to get an idea of what type of calls or what the call loads are looking like and the rates that are associated with this. So this would be your class A offense. And if you're, if you're immediately looking out, it's like, all right, what are the A offenses, the B offenses and things like that? In the council packet, if you look at the, the staff report from the sheriff's office, that neighbors classification code has kind of a breakdown of those, the As, the Bs, the non-criminal, the traffic and the administrative, the types of calls that go with that. So with the class A offenses, you can see mayor's kind of in the middle of the pack here. Watertown's definitely on the higher end, well, the, the highest relative to the other cities. When you look at your class B, um mayor's a, a little bit of the higher end, but then you have Watertown above that. And you take at the, look at the non-criminal type of offenses. See, we're in the middle there and Watertown's much higher on that front. Traffic-related calls, we're on the lower end. Then on the administrative end, um towards the upper on that. Then if you take total across the board calls, here's your per ca, uh per thousand dollar population rates as far as that goes. So with that, um Jake is uh, Jake and his city council, the City of Watertown City Council, I should say. Uh, they're having their regionalization work session tomorrow at their city council meeting at five thirty. The main discussion points that he's put forward in a council, in a memo to his council, a lot of the stuff that we've been talking about, scheduling and coverage differences. Unique to their situation, they have the three full-time officers and they have some gaps in coverage that they've been interesting, interested in trying to cover. They have discussed the regional office being in Watertown, given that we're selling uh the old uh fire hall and that's where the sheriff's office currently is. We had talked about the potential of having it across the hall here in the storage area that we cleaned up, but Watertown already has an office for their deputies. So I had just offered up half the office. It saves us the money of trying to outfit a storage area and they can just have it because the vast majority of the time is going to be spent in Watertown anyway. They're going to be talking about uh response time variances for Watertown. Doesn't look like there's going to be a huge impact on their response time, but they will talk about that and the budget impact. We're looking at a budget decrease if we're selling off hours and reallocating them towards Watertown if they're amenable to that. For them, they're looking at a budget increase, they're going to talk about how they're going to absorb that. The state of Minnesota for one year, they have allocated funding to all the cities in Minnesota for public safety spending. They're still coming out with the rules on how that's supposed to be divvied out. I can't remember what Watertown was getting off the top of my head, but mayor, we're going to be getting about a hundred and ten thousand dollars from the state of Minnesota. And they'll promulgate rules about how we can spend that. But I think spending it on police services like this is a viable option. But when they come out with those rules, I'll certainly brief counsel once again.
Is that just a one-time thing?
Yep, it's a one-time thing.
For twenty twenty-four?
I think they're going to try to get it out this year at some point, but they haven't come out with the full details on everything quite yet. So we'll see. And so that brings us, so for all of this, if you want to skip back and forth on anything, you want me to bring anything back up, tossing it out to you guys as counsel as Sataki points, the scheduling pros and cons versus current shift versus the twelve hour they want to go to regardless versus a regionalized look. Having a dedicated officer versus rotating officers, and then any other observations or concerns you guys might have. My idea, um, I will be going to the Watertown City Council meeting tomorrow, taking what we talked about tonight to have, in case they have any questions like, well, what's mayor really thinking? I can take that to them and have those conversations if they need them.
Is there a timeframe they're looking at?
No, not really, um, since they had only touched on it briefly at their annual meeting. I took it as a sort of future writing on the wall type of deal. And then I started, as I looking, I started thinking about it, looking at it more, I thought, ah, we could see some benefit here. And if we're looking at a sixteen percent increase in our contract rates for twenty twenty-four. I thought if we can adjust things and make things flexible and if that allows us to lower the amount of hours we need, but still get but have greater value for the hours we get, um, we could have a benefit of having more bang for our buck and even not having to eat that whole increase as a potential. And I had heard through the grapevine that Watertown was looking at increasing hours, so that's where I wanted to get. Well, regionalization, you have to get Watertown involved, of course, but I had heard some of those things through the grapevine that also leant it towards, yeah, that's could be something workable between the three communities, so.
I feel like you're just jump-starting the conversation that the sheriff's department wants to have. And you're just kind of getting ahead of it, which I appreciate, and I think that, you know, we talked a little bit about this in the Personnel Committee meeting and um, I think I agree, I think we'll get more. I, I, the only thing is how does it work when you have four officers dealing with, like, how do they do all that administrative? You know, that's my only concern, but I don't, I don't know what, how regionalization works, but if other towns are doing it like Norwood, Hamburg. Clearly, they have a method that all the officers are kind of aware of what's going on in every community. So it's not like you, you have to explain yourself or something when there's an issue. Is that, I mean, because you'll now have to manage four different officers, depending on who is on call than just contacting with one.
Right. Yep, I think that'll be fine. I think that's where my experience having, having my own police departments where I'm already dealing with multiple officers.
Hopefully they'll sign one of the day person as the main contact when you're dealing with the one.
It could be that too, where they have a.
A day person.
Yeah.
I li, like the idea of regionalization, I think this is good, I hope Watertown.
Well, I think it's, if they're looking to increase hours, we're looking to get more hours of what we want, but we don't need as many. I think it's a win-win for everybody.
I do too.
And then you just have a little bit more coverage randomly throughout the whole week instead of specific designated days. I mean, I've seen, when they weren't here on Sundays, I would see the regional cars in the area on non-mayor, you know, town officer days. It's not like they're not here. Yeah, and I think having an office in the fire station helped that too, right? Well, even before then, I saw them and I, and I see the CSO more now.
Utilizing them more, so a little bit more about that, there, there would be a regional car, but there's also the general patrol vehicles that are just countywide. So we'd have the regional car and if they're, if the, so are, are, we have the county where the uh general patrol north area, there's a general patrol south area. And so the general patrol north car is always around, patrolling around, it may not be in mayor, but it's in the north zone. This would be the regional car, but you would always have the general patrol as a backup to that as well.
Yeah, and it also helps their two-car deficit, you know, they're, you know. I don't know, I think that, I, I hope that they're open, you know, their council's open to the conversation and.
So Nick really needs to get a good idea of where, I mean, I can't take action on this, but what are your thoughts on regionalization? So when he goes to Watertown, if it turns out counsel here is, uh, we don't think we're going to want it, there's no point moving much forward. So he needs to have some information to go down to their meeting, they're going to ask him questions, kind of what our council's feel is and I can tell you, for me, I like this idea, I think you know that from our meeting when we, when I stream that personnel, so.
And did you talk to Young America, Norwood, I forgot the third city you said?
Cologne about their regionalization. I reached out to Cologne to talk to them a little bit about it. They've been doing it for a while, so they didn't get a whole lot out of it.
Yeah.
If that makes.
It's just normal to them. Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, what's, yeah.
It was, it was normal for them to like, torture how to express a difference.
And I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you need a, if someone says, yeah, I like the idea and something else happens down, doesn't mean you're committed to that idea. You know, we're going to work through detail, he just wants to get a gut, if someone's certainly opposed to it, certainly let Nick know, so.
There's specific things that you think of that, you know, I've tried to anticipate, but if.
You know, and I think I'm really happy that you're going to the Watertown con, conversation because you'll also hear more thoughts and whatever that will help you, you can bring that back to us to say like, here's some of their concerns they had or some positives that they, we didn't think of. And then I think if you, it's more of a joint conversation and not just like, well, you think this and we think this. It's more like, let's be collaborative about this and we could make this work for everybody.
Yeah, that's exactly it.
So I, I have no problem to be in support of moving to something like this. Yes, the final details aren't lied out or laid out, but I would definitely be open to moving in this direction for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I like it.
I don't have anything that tells me we shouldn't. So I mean, I, I just, I'm.
Getting all our data, we're seeing.
Yeah.
Or not. Small enough community, you'd hear if there were issues with certain thing. I mean, we would have heard things and.
And, and it's a year, you know, it's a year-to-year contract. So you, you know, you go for the year and then if we need to do more hour, then it's just a, you have a little bit more. Okay, let, you know, at Watertown actually doesn't need that many hours. You guys need your fight back. It's probably an easier shift even to do even mid-contract if really needed.
So they're going to twelve-hour shifts. That's happening. So if this doesn't happen and we stay the way we are, I think this is much more beneficial to our community than having someone here Sunday, Monday, Tuesday for twelve hours. And I think spread out like this is way more beneficial for the community.
I agree.
And not just Sunday, Monday, any three days. It could be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I still think that now we have the whole week covered. And, and I think it's, I, I think this is way better.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Nope.
Perfect. All right, we are adjourned.
I'm gonna leave this here since I'm already living in this one. And I won't come and get it to me to another day.